Recording in progress.
Ballot being ordered, roll call.
Smith.
Wood.
Carr.
Walker.
Woods. Approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I second the motion.
Motion made second in the council discussion. Hearing done, all favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Claims.
What's that thing with the check with Christine and the money fanatic?
So she was issued a, she posted bond for somebody and was due a refund out of the court. The check was issued out of the court and inadvertently deposited into town account. Her name was on it and everything. It never should have been allowed at the bank, but it was. But it was also our error for, we put it in with a couple other court checks. So it got deposited in the town account. So the only way to get it back out was to write it back out to her. So I made really good notes in the memo. That's what it's for.
Notes on here is Northwest Pipe or REIT paths. Those are little block paths that you see on the posts. Those are highway REIT water meters. Those get damaged and fail. So that's, we buy a bunch of them at time. Some go through quite often. And the other thing, versus more severely, moving project for 14,000, five oh six feet.
I have, those are reimbursements, but it puts us in the negative until our reimbursement comes in. And I have, because the checks are going to get bigger, and our sewer can cover it, but because the checks are going to get bigger and it's not going to be able to, um, they are sending me the paperwork so that we can get paid in advance instead of paying it and waiting for a reimbursement. There's special circumstances where you can get, almost all small towns do it. It's just paperwork. So it's being sent to you.
So get in advance ahead.
It's going to happen to you.
And then we find the other one on there, very, almost very last one, how long course for the cabinet? That's going to be up till post 2060.
I make a motion we accept the claims.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, in council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing, financials. Jock over financials right in front of you.
Should that weigh, this sewer project shows in negative? Okay.
Yep. That's actually a little long line item. I have to correct that. It said 5312, it said 5212. So I would read that. I have to recreate the line. So I'll correct that.
I make a motion we accept the financials, Jock over.
Second motion.
Motion made second, accept the financials. In council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Reports. This last month, we're finishing up on a whole bunch of things that's been done at the end of the year. We talked about it. So we're still finishing up on the blower building. That come in way under budget. So what we end up doing is we have to go out and rewire it from the lift station. So put in new heaters, redid the electrical, redid the vent fans, redid blowers, redid all that. That's just getting finished up right now. And then also, we did get the okay from our, we could buy a new sewer camp. So that'll be about $31,000.
That was the thing they can.
Go down the sewer, yep. So we got the okay to spend that extra money on that too. So it's been getting all that figured out and all the paperwork in line and make sure it's okay by everybody before we go forward with spending that money. So now all that taken care of and done. Been working with on the community wildfire grant deal, working on cleaning up a few other things. In the grants and stuff is coming to the end here of the year when I get some of this stuff done. Public Works is doing a lot of cleanup, getting ready for winter, plowing, they did a little bit. Plowing and sanding, sewer cleaning, having some, we've been noticing some flows in some different areas. They're just getting, just sludge like at school and stuff. So cleaned out about three times, worked that sludge down. The lines. So getting all that cleaned up. They're doing, one of the other things they're doing, they got partially done is, there was a water line on the north side of town that was actually went across the neighbor's property. So the town's moving that. We're staying out right away and go back around with the guys. So that's not on that, that was property anymore. We're doing that. We did a couple new installs on the north side of town this last month, water sewer installs.
Can I bring up in front of the tribal nutrition, I mean, the, one, the great sewer thing was blocked with leaves, which is clear, but there's a huge puddle. And so the other day when we had a frozen, it was a big nice thing of ice. And it's the drain was all clogged.
We'll mention it to the guys to be double checking those. That's one of the problems, leaves fall and it plugs that.
Yeah, we cleaned it out, but it, some of, Jerry did actually, but it was left quite a big puddle. It's right where the handicap part is, right behind the doors.
Yeah, and then, that one first time for sanding. That's usually one of the places, just remind them to hit that little extra in that area. So Public Works been busy just getting all that stuff done and getting things put away and cleaned up for the winter. It's been kind of nice. So they've been trying to do a few things. One of the things we work, put gravel at people's places and all that. Gravel got short on us, so we're not doing that. We're here just a few minutes. We're starting to get in the product. So we just have some, we're doing our jobs. When that gravel comes available, get and start with the gravel, roads and mud roads and stuff. Fire Department, another busy month for them. Nine motor vehicle accidents, two structure fires, one house, one chicken coop. But the house fire did pretty significant damage on the interior of the house. Pretty much all savable, nearly got saved in the house to a point, but pretty big damage to it too. One of those, it's that type of year and we really need to be careful about plug-in heaters and what's up against the heaters and all of that. It was, it looks like that's what that fire was too. It was just another plug-in heater that was. Some things you don't think about is we plug heaters in and out, in and out, and they're left on. Every time you do that at arcs, so you look at your plugs and they're a little dark colored, or they got little spots on them. That's not making good contact. So that is a resistor then, and it gets hotter and hotter and hotter. And the more hotter it gets, the more resistance it gets, and pretty soon your walls are. We normally see it a lot on plug-in engine heaters. Through the year, we change lots of them in the shop because they do the same thing, they melt the loads. So those things just to be conscientious of is make sure your plugins are clean, make sure you're plugging in the right circuits. Make sure you're not overloading a circuit. You know, most heaters are 1,500 watts. That's the max for that circuit. So don't be plugging in all kinds of other stuff into it too. It's just some things just be thinking about so we don't have to.
Well, yeah, I'm doing fiber installs and I go and plug in the power supply and it falls back out of my hand.
You know, and then you plug a heater in that, so it's not making good contact. Now it's an arc in there and pretty soon you have overheated circuit and a fiber or something. You know, some of those things just need to be thinking of when you're looking at that, these little houses. And everyone always falls back to the 59 cent outlet too. You probably should spend the $2. Please.
All right. So court bailiff, eight arrests. They were cited. The jails having some mechanical issues, so can't transport people to jail right now. Thirteen traffic stops, admitted six citations and multiple criminal investigations, five citations.
Enter. Clark.
Just a reminder that their open burning is closed and all doublenesses, business licenses and chicken licenses are due the first of the year.
Ooh, I forgot.
Oh, chickens, cats. Be a cat license.
We actually have someone that comes and gets one every year because they like to have the tag. So if their cat gets lost and someone finds it, they can call us and tell them where to go get it. So.
Well, all the ones that have moved into my carport don't have tags.
I would have been.
So you knew where to take them then too?
Yes.
Library, Starler.
Services to the library, Saturday, December 13th, the Friends of the Library Christmas Tea and Silent Auction from 9 to 4. The evening on Silent Auction will end at 3:00 P.M. Midway will be Friday, December 19th. The writing topic will be winter. Hard to say whether it'd be winter at that time of the year. Saturday, December 20th, Paper Crafts will be making paper stars, starting at 1:00 P.M. Will be open from 11:00 to 2:00 on December 24th, closed for Christmas Day and then open from 11:00 to 2:00 on December 31st for New Year's. New Year's Eve. Collections, deleted books have been removed from the catalog. And thank you to all of the patrons who came in and looked through the selections. We appreciate you being a part of the process. Technology, nothing new to report. General administrative business, books and search kits will be at the Friends of the Library Christmas Tea, December 13th. And thank you to Food in the Park for the loaded candy gapples. You made a bunch of kids and adults smile. We had to make them not open them in the library.
Well, thank you for taking them.
Thank you to all of the citizens who have shared apples and potatoes and squash and assorted food goods. We've had a, something in our month to give away as far as food every day of the week for the last month. So a little longer than that. So. Thank you to Mark for letting us get ahead of him with the snow on Saturday. It was still cleared well before noon, but we aren't as fast as we used to be and that stuff was really heavy. A few people have asked what the library fundraisers raise monthly for specifically. We do primarily three fundraisers a year at the library. The fall fundraiser, generally in October, is done by the library board. And all funds raised at the fall fundraiser are going to the operating budget in the library. We budget to raise a certain amount of money every year. It appears under contributions and donations on our revenue budget. We budgeted to raise 2,500 this fiscal year. Operating budget pays for payroll, utilities, building maintenance and supplies, insurance, books and materials, office maintenance and supplies and technology, et cetera. If you want to see that, look at the revenue budget for the library. The Friends of the Library have opened an annual Mother's Day slash Modern Tea in the spring. They will make sale, a scaled down, make an offer sale and a silent auction. The Friends do a Christmas tea with the same model. The money from the Friends events belongs to the Friends of the Library. Those funds are not connected in any way with the library or the library's budget. The Friends of the Library's mandate is to support the library. Their support, most recently, includes purchasing the materials to build and decorate 23 gender run TPs. The purchase of folding tables, the purchase of our subscription to Junior Library Bill, which provides new books. They have purchased new books for the library in the past when we ran out of money, when the county shorted us. And paid for our technology contract with Hot Springs Telephone Company for a couple of years. Not to mention purchasing plastic silverware plates, coffee cups, our Sanders Academy lecture subscription, the banner for books and search kits, et cetera. I hope this answers your questions that have been circulating. You're always welcome to call me or drop in if you have additional questions. Just call the library and ask for stuff. I'm always happy to talk about the library. The library board will meet at the library Thursday, December 18th at 5:00 P.M. for a monthly meeting this month. We moved the meeting to Thursday because of the Christmas concert Wednesday night. Statistics, zero interference, 393 walk-ins, 107 computer users, 32 wireless users, 111 children, 883 prints and 76 copies. The orders are due being closed on Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. It's protected our numbers. That's all I've got.
Zoning compliance. Some questions and stuff this month, but nothing, I'll actually just see one tonight that we've talked about. Parks recreation.
Well, even though field parks are running out there, it's not usual on the park.
Oh, well. Jake. New business.
Two.
Resolution 2026 dash zero four R. A resolution to approve a petition for annexation of property owned by Lucky Hauser and Margaret Hauser. A resolution to approve a petition for annexation of property. Whereas the town of Hot Springs, Montana has received a petition from Lucky Hauser and Margaret Hauser, attached here to and incorporated herein by this reference requesting annexation of said property into the town of Hot Springs. Whereas the town council has the authority to annex property into the town of Hot Springs pursuant to laws in the state of Montana. And whereas the town council held a meeting here on December 8th, I guess it is, 2025 to discuss this resolution.
Second, now may I?
Now, you didn't, but now therefore it's hereby resolved. The town council of town of Hot Springs hereby declares that this is considered an annexation of real property described in Exhibit A, attached here in two pursuant to Part 4403 of Title VII, Chapter 2, MCA. It is determined to be in the best interest of the town of Hot Springs to pass a resolution on annexation of said property into the town of Hot Springs. So where does it add on Jake's Road? You go all the way to the back, back page is the easiest. So Jake's Road where the old blue house is, the road turns to gravel just before Lisa's place. So it's on the, on that side there is Nikki and Elijah's place. Their place was built, there was a poor survey, is what it looks like happened. They built some of their stuff onto Lucky and Ann Hauser's property. So through discussion with a bunch of different people and with the surveyor and with all parties, that came to this conclusion. So what they're going to do is Lucky and Ann Hauser are going to sell a piece of property, 47.88 feet wide at one end, 45.6 feet wide at the other end, and 187.16 feet long for a total of .2 acres. This will get the wind property all in one continuous. Because it is one continuous piece of property, it will be adjoined to theirs and planted as that. So that lot line, their old lot line will go away. This will be added to their property. That's why it has to be annexed. Because they are already annexing the town of Hot Springs. So this .2 acre annexation is to include that.
Is that a little part of it?
It's just a little tiny piece right there is what it is. So part of their house and the shed are over on Lucky and Ann's property. And the resolution of this is to survey that off, sell that to the winds. But in that is we have annexed it to the town because it's already an annexed piece of property. So that's, that's what we are doing to it. Is there any questions on that?
I make a motion we accept this motion 2026 dash zero four R. The resolution to approve petition for annexation of property owned by Lucky Hauser and Margaret Hauser.
I'll second it.
Motion second, in council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
I have a point of order, please. I would like to go back to the comment for each agenda item, which was skipped over when we rolled from Parks and Rec right into new business. It's not really a comment, but I have a question. I would like to know if that claims list is published out online before the monthly approval so that those of us that are council members can also see it.
It's not, but you can kind of get it anytime.
Okay. And then with that, would I get to see the GL coding with the chart of the councils?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now you can go forward unless somebody else has a public comment on that item that was skipped. Okay.
Just for clarification for the crowd. It's word says.
Did the public say I have a comment?
Agenda item will be allowed. So the agenda item is Resolution 2026 zero four R's we're speaking on.
Well, my hand was up back after the Parks and Rec board and I was ignored. So I thought I needed to call a point of order to get back to the prior item on the agenda.
Public hearing, if you read the agenda, you have a bottom comment at the end. Thank you. Lucky, you're approved.
Thank you.
Yes, that already passed before I called.
Fiscal year 2025 AFR adjusting entries.
Someone has to file a review, please.
So when they did the AFR, Maugnay did the AFR, she has the adjusting entries. Those over in front of you. Got motion, period, questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, these adjustments are already built into the AFR report.
Yes, that's why it's the AFR before you approve the AFR.
So these are what Maugnay did when she goes through and does the AFR. These are all the adjusting.
Okay. I'll make a motion we approve the adjustments to the AFR.
Second motion.
Motion made second, in council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, fiscal year 2025 annual financial report. Discussion. Questions? About motion.
I make a motion we accept the annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made second, in council discussion.
Well, I just want to mention so the crowd understands that we have a monitor that goes through and creates this annual financial report. And these adjustment figures that we approved before that are included in this nice thick report. But we pay her annually to do this report.
And that's.
Okay. You have a council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Wouldn't carry it. Next item, both of office for Randall A. Woods, mayor. Ed.
You up? I'm trying to do something already.
When did we do the conflict of interest? Was that at the end?
January.
January.
So it's supposed to be the whole thing.
Yeah. Well, no, just the circle.
Notice it's here by a yellow. That's what I wanted to start.
Oh, you started there.
Raise your right hand. I, Randall A. Woods.
I, Randall A. Woods.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Montana.
The Constitution of the state of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. So help me God.
That's it, for instance.
Thank you. Leslie.
Ed, you have to sign this. Sorry, you'll have to sign. Yeah.
Mayor, your right hand. I, Leslie B. Smith.
I, Leslie B. Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Montana.
And the Constitution of the state of Montana.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Jennifer Carr. Your right hand. I, Jennifer Elkar.
I, Jennifer Elkar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Montana.
The Constitution of the state of Montana.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. So help me God.
No, that was pay rises.
That was the center. Yeah, okay. That was, that was pay rise. Okay. I know we approved something, but, all right.
That ain't even left in this paper. I didn't give it to them.
Just like me in the right mind.
Randy, do you have the library bill list?
Just like me in the right mind.
Ah, got it.
So the reason we get this swearing in now is to take office at the very end of the month. We don't have a like Tuesday, the first Tuesday. So if something happens before then, I would have sworn it. Next item on the agenda is library bonuses.
It's that great little book I gave you, Ed, and I still missed one.
To the city of Hot Springs, the President of Hot Springs Town and Country Library Board of Trustees has voted to approve a one-time holiday bonus of $1,000 to Starla Rice, $600 to Martha Vogel, $550 to Jesse Stevens, $550 to Nina DeCoster and $400 to Catherine Finlay. The Board appreciates the state's dedication to serve the public and a deep belief in the tradition of providing library services to the community.
That's awesome.
Any questions?
Yeah.
They deserve that.
Got motion to approve?
I make a motion we give the library people some bonuses.
I'll second.
Motion made second, council discussion. All favor eye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
So it was 1,600 and then 550, last three, right?
Here, so you write it down.
Oh, nice.
I can copy it for you if you want.
I just like, I was.
Okay. Next item, public comment on non-agenda items. Remind everyone you have three minutes and it's public comment, not interaction. Remind everyone you have three minutes and it's public comment, not interaction. Does anyone have anything?
I have something.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, council members and neighbors. I stand here tonight, not just one person, but as someone who's watched this town raise its kids, celebrate its victories, and hold each other up through hard times. We are a small town, yes, but we are mighty because of our small businesses. These are not just stores, restaurants, and bars, they're our livelihoods, our gathering places, and where everybody knows, let's say, stores that always have exactly what we need, the diner where everybody knows your order, and the bar where everybody knows your names. These are small businesses and the heartbeat of who we are. They are also the first ones to step up when someone in this room is hurting. These are the people who put on fundraisers the minute a family gets in hardship or a health diagnosis. These are the businesses that keep our food pantry stocked year after year. These are the owners who close up early without being asked to host a memorial when one of our own community members passes away. That's not commerce, that's family. Lately, some of us have felt that heartbeat skip. We've seen police overreach, harassment of our businesses and customers, pressure tactics, and presumed attempts to push out our owners and change the soul of our community with hidden agendas. These tactics have no place here. When one of us is targeted, all of us are targeted. When one small business hurts, we all hurt. And let's be very clear, once they manage to take one of us down, once they force one door to close for good, we all know who's next. They won't stop at one, they never do. If we let this happen to even one neighbor, we're telling them the rest of us are fair game. We stand together as small businesses. So tonight, I'm asking, council, please put real enforcement protections on the books. Pass ordinance that stops the harassment disguised as enforcement. Give our local owners legal tools and rapid response process when they are being targeted. Please do it now rather than later because every week you wait is another week a family in this room wonders that they'll lose everything they have built. This town has always looked out for its own, it's time we prove that we still do. To everyone here tonight, shop local, talk up our businesses, check on each other. If you're under pressure, go check on people. Let them know we have their back because when we back each other, we win. This is our town, these are our people, these are our businesses, please help protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Actually, I didn't have time to do it, I was gonna read a speech, it was almost very similar to what you just did.
That's good. Do you wanna read mine now?
I have a question, didn't we used to have a police commission and why don't we?
That was for...
MCA, we don't have that many officers.
It was for inner police disputes, it wasn't governing the police.
Yeah, it wasn't only about, so it was police officers. If they were in trouble or something, it had nothing to do with dispute. So the public came with a complaint, it didn't go to the police commission. It was if, and where we use that is when I fired a police officer and the police commission at that, we had a police commission at that time. But when you have less than four officers, but MCA's don't have that.
But you can if you want.
So the police commission, what it is, is the town council.
Okay.
That in a sense we revert it to the council. Diana?
What about when I worked at Buck's, Mike Winkin would leave early to come down and interview hiring police for here. You know, him and two other guys. He said they were the ones that interviewed the police and then they forwarded them on to the city council. It was, they were appointed or they volunteered or whatever, but what was that? And we didn't have that many police officers back then. We had maybe two and a half or one and a half or two. We have more police officers today than we've ever had.
We have two and a half. So just...
And that, and so Mike Winkin at that time, I don't think he wouldn't tell me a falsehood that, but he told me he was coming down and with two other guys.
So the mayor has the right to put a hiring committee together if he wants to choose.
So it was like a citizen's...
So you don't wanna, you don't think to pull yourself out of there and let three guys come in and say, Randy, these are the three guys that, or how many people, they say we've interviewed them, and so...
So I can choose three people and they can come in and interview, sure. But we're not hiring right now, so that's probably...
Well, I mean, I don't, I misspoke there. I mean, hire three people who are commissioned or whoever, they're not, it's a non-paying thing. Mike didn't get paid for it, but he was one of three people. When you guys were advertising for a new officer, the applicants came in, they interviewed the applicants, and then they then proposed them to you guys.
Did they pick one of the three or make...
No, they just interviewed him and stuff like that, gave their, gave their...
Opinions?
Yeah, Mike was, he was an ex-cop, so he, you know, I think that was one of the reasons why he was chosen. But anyway, so I, so my question is, back then, there was less than four officers. So did those laws...
He was on, he was on the police commission. The police commission would never have anything to do with hiring. So even if we had a police commission today and I was gonna hire an officer today, the police commission would have nothing to do with that.
I, well, I wasn't saying they were hiring him, they were recommending them to you guys.
So we're doing an interview process. As a mayor, I am the one that hires. All employees get hired by the mayor, doesn't matter, any town, that's who does it. So if I want to choose three people from the community to interview the people, I could, yes.
So, and the police commission is if there's an issue with an officer, then they're, that's who...
So I went, I, so I am over the officer. So the officer was not doing what they were told or what, whatever the problems. So the officer then, I wrote the officer up. The officer didn't agree with my write-up. His grievance committee is...
The police commission.
The police commission. So because it's so hard to get people to fill those positions, but we did. And by state statute, we don't have to have one, but we wrote it in there that town council then is, would fill that role. So if I, an officer did, well, actually, any employee today. So if I write up any employee today, they don't like what I did, so if I...
They would come to the council.
Then you're the grievance. So then they, I present my side of the case, they present their side of the case, you make recommendations.
So the councils then, the police officers, you hire them, then you tell the council who you've hired?
The only time the council is involved in a recording is if cocaine department heads, chief of police, clerk. If there was a supervisory position, like we had a public works supervisor, which we don't, but that would be, so that's when the town council would approve that appointment, not the hiring of them, just the appointment of that time.
Well, I don't know why you'd wanna take on all that stress. I mean, you could have them do that for you and then...
Do what?
Do the interviewing process, the three people, and then tell you, go do all the background checks, do all that stuff, and then present it to you and to the council at the same time.
There's MCA's that dictate what people can see, like background...
I can hear anything you're saying.
There's MCA's that dictate who does the hiring, what part of the processes they do. It actually states specifically that the council cannot see some of the information and do the hiring. So there's, there's MCA's that have to be followed. As we go along, I know when I was hired, I was interviewed by the entire council. We have since learned through classes and education that that was actually inappropriate, but still, that's how I was hired. I was interviewed by all four council members, the same with the other people that were interviewed at the same time. And then the council voted, then the council, because I do hold the department head position, voted to hire me, but it was, they should not have been in the interview process. And there's MCA's that dictate how that works, also town ordinances that dictate how that works.
Add and add back, yeah, just one more thing, just to go back is, times change and how we have to do things change. You know, how it was done twenty years ago, you know, is not how it's done today. Just like how they figure taxes, how they do all of it. When the legislature meets, they change the rules a lot. So things have changed a lot over time. Compatentiality on people's, some of their history and stuff is, has changed. You can't see that anymore, so just some of those things, the rules have changed over time.
I have to agree with you, history changed.
So what processes do we have for concerning the complaints right now about the chief of police that have been made? And so what's, what kind of processes there for that to evaluate, to look at?
The MCA's and actually in your, in your, in your guidebook that you have on council people, there's, you need to hear the complaints, bring the complaints to me. I'm the only one that can do that, but like I said, it comes a point when you're the grievance committee. So at what point are you tainted? So that becomes part of the problem too. That is a little bit easier if you had a, just random four members of the public, you know, might not have that be tainted as bad as you. If you're getting ever a complaint and then there are people sending you letters and doing all that, now you're seeing what I should be seeing, whether I reprimand or whatever, now you're already seeing, which you're probably gonna see when we come together anyway. So whether matters or not matters. But so far, what complaints have you done and are they justified? That's what I probably need to see.
Well, by the one that, for the meeting that we were supposed to be at with Judy Norga.
Yeah. And part of it is that's tainting you and part of the grievance committee.
Sure. But I'm just saying, what's the process? So I know Reedet, Reedet stepped out of the meeting, they had it with you, and I know she's met with you again, so what kind, what's the process here?
That's still kind of a little bit in question. We're still looking at everything, reviewing everything, you gotta get both sides of the story. You're hers, I gotta look at, she's provided all kinds of stuff. I'm looking at what the police department is doing through logbooks and their video and their stuff too, and putting all that together. I was gonna be with Judy again and I felt that she's kinda jumped the gun a little bit on some things and I wish you would've came to me, like I told her I would, and find out what else is going on, look at it, and we could've sat down and talked about some stuff. And that needs to happen, is we need to have some communication, so. Diana?
I haven't been to one of these for a long time, but I have a question. I do know that netiquism does not apply to this and in no way am I saying anything. But I do wanna say, there's a grievance committee and we gotta come to you, but what if there's a grievance about your wife or your stepson? How, how can you be...
You know me better than that. I'm harder on them people.
Regardless, when I was, when I was hired, Dan Clark came in and said that if there was a problem, that it goes to the council president.
Well, he just told us that it goes to him, so I was asking, and now you cleared that for him. And so, yeah, I was just curious about that.
Do you have to follow the steps? Just follow the steps? If you have a grievance with Mike Gray, follow the steps.
I have one thing, you know, going in, it's a tricky situation. Going in there, going to Amy complaining about you, going to you complaining about Amy or your stepson, that's a, that's a, that's a tricky situ... We don't wanna instill anybody off because there's repercussions and we don't like that.
Well, and part of it is, is what you have to remember is if you have legitimate complaints or a legitimate problem, you're not gonna get pissed off about it because it's legitimate. And we have, we gotta find solutions. There are two sides to every story. There's, you gotta find solutions, Diana. I mean, you can't just go there mad and just, this is what I want done. It's probably not gonna happen that way. There's, we have the whole steps, no matter what, no matter who they are.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just questioning, you know, because usually I would come into the city hall, but I see you guys built a barrier for me now where I can't come all the way through and get up.
There's lots of reasons for that. Times have changed.
They are.
So...
They are. But I was just curious about that, just some questions. And one thing about me, I'm very direct. I don't go behind your back, I don't tell lies about you. I state what it is and how I feel.
Anyone else?
I would like to thank you, Leslie, for the, for your explanation of the annual financials. I hope that they're also available at city hall. And I'm gonna assume that Magna, who made the CAFRA adjusting entries, is a CPA.
Magna, I used to work for the state of Montana, I was able to review some things.
So she helps us close our financials at the end of every year. Who is our annual auditor?
Nicole Nunnin.
Nicole Nunnin, good enough. I used to help her, worked with the state and the state with. And my other question or comment, maybe this is a comment because the claims were an agenda item, but apparently I wasn't allowed to comment on them until now. Is that how the agenda read? My apologies if that's how the agenda read. To Diana's point, independence is a generally accepted auditing standard and it's common in the accounting profession. And independence isn't just a mental state of mind where you have an independent mental state of mind, it's also of appearance. And that's where it gets murky in a small town. When the mayor is married to the town clerk who's the mother of the public works guy. All of that independence is compromised just virtually by the appearance. So yes, Randy, we need to have more open communication about all of that because the appearance of independence is marred right out of the gates because we are a small town.
So just to answer, one more question for you, just for the rest of the public is, do I keep reading the public works directive of Mike Gray? Mike Gray applied, he was, I was dating his mother at the time and we're not married. So time ran out, he was the only applicant. I extended it twice the amount of time, he was still the only applicant. Mike holds two engineering degrees and mathematics degree.
He's a great employee.
I'm not doubting you.
He's a great employee.
I'm not doubting his prediction.
Hiring the best qualified person is what I hire.
Yeah.
And that's where we go.
And on that note, I'd like to add that my letter and my resume was on file when the daughter was hired for sewer billing and I did sewer billing for twenty-five thousand accounts in Azuma, Montana, and SID billing and everything else. And I was never even acknowledged, so tell me the only qualified applicant applied.
You're talking about after snoring, anyway, is there any other public comment?
I just, one more thing. I'm just hoping that because we spoke up today, that we don't get more harassment because of it.
No, you and me still need to meet, I told you I wanted to.
Yes, we do.
We all need to talk.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
No, I'll meet with Judy, I'm not meeting with you.
I don't know, I'll call the community.
No, Randy, I don't...
Any other public comment? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion made second, all favor, aye.
Aye.